Come on, Nate.
Just let us know when you're ready.
I have one of my glasses. I couldn't read. It's a go.
Well, were we? Okay, I guess we can get our meeting started now at six o'clock. Do you want to take the lead, or is Kerry going to take the lead on it?
Mr. Mayor and Council, six o'clock is a special city council meeting. This is an opportunity to canvass the returns on November 5th, the election. The document's in front of you here. So if you call it to order, if you want to just adopt the agenda, then we'll move on to items three and go from there.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order.
Make motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Or I could say, oh, motion passes. That makes other people happy. Okay, so it's canvassing returns of November 5th, 2024 mayoral and city council election.
Okay.
When are you gonna speak, or?
You have in front of you the abstract that we've gotten from Anoka County elections. It's most of the statistics regarding this most recent election, including registrations, how many were registered that morning, how many registered on Election Day, the number of votes cast on Election Day, number of absentee votes, et cetera. It also breaks it down as to how many votes each candidate received for both the mayoral contest and the city council contest. And right now, today, all you have to do is take a look at the results and approve the results that we had a duly legal election. And if you have any questions, I can try to answer those for you.
What are the precinct numbers? Now, it's one, two, three, but where are they?
Precinct, oh, excuse me. Precinct one is the northern portion of East Bethel. And that is here, well, it's at the senior center, attached to City Hall. Precinct two covers a significant portion of East Bethel that is west of Highway 65 and south of Viking. It's kind of an L shape. And their polling place is at Our Savior's Lutheran Church on the south side of Viking, west of 65. And then precinct three covers kind of the south central part of East Bethel. And the polling place for precinct three is at fire station number one on the north side of Viking.
Are these results gonna be in the packet or on our website at all? If not, I'd like to mention the amount of absentee voting.
You certainly can. These are directly from the Secretary of State's office, and we have a link to those results on our webpage.
You could find them online, too. But the total number of persons voting was 7,490, 7,490. And 2,577 of those were absentee. That's almost 35%.
Correct.
Wow. That's kind of an interesting factoid.
And it gets larger and larger with every election.
So you need a vote of approval of this, or acceptance of this?
Yep, we do have a resolution.
If you guys are done with your side meeting there, do we have a motion to accept the canvassing results? Anybody want to make a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept the abstract for the 2024 election.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Mundell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It was unanimous. Motion passed. So, there you go.
Our low side meeting, I was showing Bob the map of the precincts.
Come on, this is serious business here.
A little bit.
And there is a copy of the abstract in the signature folder. I do need each one of you to sign that one tonight.
Be sure you don't leave before you sign that.
We just pass it around before we start the work meeting?
You guys sure you've got enough mental energy to handle two things at once?
Probably.
All right. So that concludes our special meeting. Do we need to adjourn properly? Motion to adjourn, please.
Make a motion that we adjourn our special meeting.
All right. Motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None heard. Approved unanimously. Okay.
I'll pass that abstract around.
One thing at a time here, pal. Okay, so we completed our special meeting. That's not the one. It's the one in here. And that moves us into our city council work meeting. And the first item on that is the facility access policy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can ask for a little adjustment in the schedule here for fire relief to go first, if that's allowable, and give them as much time as they need for the presentation.
It's okay with me. Any objections?
I'm done.
Hearing none. Let her rip. I think it's any line is fine, isn't it? How do we start this slideshow?
Which one?
That one there. Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. For those of you, Bob and Brian, you've probably heard this spiel many times.
Couple.
We've been coming to the council every year for at least the last 13 years to make a presentation on where we stand with the Relief Association. So this is our annual update on what's going on. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So the East Bethel pension plan, this is our agenda for tonight. But basically, I'll give you an overview of the pension plan, where we stand, what our goals are, the current status, contributions for 2024 and beyond, pension levels, and then the member requests. All right, so the overview is, the Relief Association is a entity that exists solely for the purpose of providing pension benefit to our members. And it's mainly used as a recruitment and retention tool for our fire department. Pension is payable once a member has reached five years of service, which is a change from last year. Up until last year, it was 10 years for minimum vesting. At 20 years, you're fully vested, and you can collect a pension once you've reached the age of 50. All right, so currently, our pension is managed by PARA with oversight by the state of Minnesota. All right, so the goals of the pension plan are to provide pension benefit that attracts and retains our firefighters. We want to always maintain a fully funded pension plan. We want to pay the retirees accurately and timely. We want to monitor the investment performance, and we want to communicate effectively with city council, which is why we come to the city council every single year. And it's why the mayor is one of the members of the Relief Association trustees. All right, so our short-term goals, and really, it's a goal just in general, but we want to maintain a fully funded pension. That's the main goal. We want to be prudent. We want to make sure that we're making the right decisions so that we're always fully funded. The long-term goal, we just want to provide the best pension that we can for our firefighters. All right, so why is this important? So if you look at our current staff, and all the numbers I'm going to talk about here only include the paid-on-call firefighters, so we have 29 paid-on-call firefighters. This does not include our chief, Chief Santow, and it doesn't include Inspector Uden. So this is just for the 29 paid-on-call firefighters. So currently, we have 18 members that are vested in some way, shape, or form at least five years of service or more, which makes up 62% of our fire department. It also includes 285 years of experience, which makes up the majority of our experience in our fire department, 91%. And it includes all of the officers and leadership for our fire department as well. So it takes roughly three years for a firefighter to have enough training to come onboard and be an effective firefighter. Now, of course, some people are effective right away, or within a year or so. Some people, maybe it takes a little bit longer, but it takes roughly three years. So really, the goal here is we want to get the best people that we can, and we want to keep them. And this is one of the ways that we keep them. Especially after three years, we want to make sure that they want to stay for at least five years. And then every year, the pension goes up a little bit more, by 4%, by 4%, by 4%, by 4%. So really, the goal is to use this as a tool to keep people another year, another two years, another five years, or another 10 years. All right, so where does the money actually come from? So the pension plan is at PARA. It is a fund that is meant specifically for paying pensions. So state aid, this is numbers aggregated from the last five years. So basically, 28% of the money comes from state aid, 6% from city contribution, 1% from other miscellaneous, and about 66% comes from our investment earnings. So that's roughly a five-year average. So I'll give you, the next slide will show what the items are for this year, year-to-date. So state aid, we received just under $100,000. The city contribution was $14,000. Other miscellaneous was $38,000, which I should have put an asterisk by that because that is a little bit of an unusual number. $37,000 of that was a bonus that we received by joining the PARA plan last year.
What is the other and the miscellaneous?
So the other miscellaneous is just any amount that doesn't come from these areas. Usually, that number is like 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, because every time a firefighter retires, the state of Minnesota kicks in about $1,000. Well, not about $1,000, $1,000 to help pay taxes. So usually, that number is directly a reflection of how many people retired the previous year. So the number normally would have been $1,000 this year, but it happened to be $38,000 because we received $37,000 for joining PARA last year. So they gave us a $10,000 bonus and then $1,000 per firefighter. And last year, at the time we entered the plan, we had 27 firefighters that were paid on call. And then investment earnings year-to-date is $79,000. So that's where we sit this year. The last slide showed kind of a five-year average. Okay, so where does the money actually go?
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah, please.
On those earnings of $79,000, what was the average balance in the investment account on which that 79 was made? Or what was the rate of return on them?
Yeah, so the rate of return as of the last statement balance was 3.6% on the year.
Really?
Yep. And that was as of the statement from October 31st. So there's, I think, in 2024, I think there was two really bad months, and all the rest of the months are really good. So where does the money actually go? So administration is roughly $2,000, and pensions, it varies. This year, we had two pension payouts, and they amounted $226,000 plus. I put a star by administration, so that was one of the huge benefits of moving to PARA. So you can see, I'm expecting that our administration fees are going to be roughly $2,000 this year. And the normal in the past has been about $20,000. It was about $10,000 for our financial advisor and about $10,000 for audits, of which we don't need to do either one anymore. All right, next slide. So this just shows the state and city aid over the last many, many years. And you can see that the state aid is rising pretty rapidly. Next year, I expect that number to be... What's that?
3.5.
Yep, so the state allows us to assume a 3.5 increase each year. Sometimes it's a little bit more. I expect that number to be over $100,000 next year. And then you can see that the city aid's been consistent at $14,000, which was derived roughly at $500 per firefighter. We don't come to you annually and ask you to adjust it. That's kind of been where we've been at. So that's what that number is. Yeah, so the state aid is, the state aid comes from 2% money. So property taxes, not property taxes, property insurance. All the money that's paid for property insurance, 2% of that goes to the state. And then the state collects all that money into a big pile. They look at each city, and they look at your service area and the number of citizens and the number of businesses, and they divvy that money out among all the different cities.
So I wondered about that earlier today because I couldn't imagine that 2% of the insurance premiums in East Bethel only amounted to $100,000.
No, no.
So how are they dividing this money?
You know, it's a good question on how they decide.
Seems like you guys might be kind of getting the short end of it.
Yeah, but if you look at the other cities around us, it's actually much higher than some of the other cities around us.
Really?
Yeah. And all that information is actually publicly available, too. Unfortunately, it's publicly available later. So there's another slide that comes up where I talk about the different benefit levels in the surrounding cities. But some of that data is from 2020, and some of the data is from 2022. So the Office of the State Administrator publishes their reports about two years after the fact, and PARA's are about four years after the fact, which is... It's nice to have the actual data, but it's too bad that it's a little bit dated.
So how much do the talks down at the Capitol Committee hearings have to do? I know they talk a lot about EMS and firefighters, and does that, is that the state aid they're playing with? Or is that, what monies are they discussing?
So that's one of the things that they like to discuss. The thing that they like to discuss is whether they can tax us on this money, which they can. But they would like to tax it more. So that's one of the things. If you wait till after you're 50, it's not taxable if you roll it over into an IRA or something like that. So that's what most people do. If you take a lump-sum payment, you just get paid out a check, PARA immediately removes taxes from that, and it's quite extensive.
Even if you go to 401K, they're going to get their tax money and just a little bit later down the road.
But at least they can grow, you know, for a few years until you actually take it out. All right, so this is the history of the results. You can see that only two years in the history that I've been able to dig back into, we fell below a funded status, and that was after 2008, when the stock market completely crashed. You can see we had a big dip here in the recent crash, too. And I guess that was during COVID in 2021. The credible thing about that year is our investment earnings were negative $450,000 roughly, and we still were overfunded. So even with a massive loss like that, we still maintained a funded status. And part of the reason that we saw a sharp decline there is not only because of that, but we had several pensions that we paid out that year as well, so. All right, so every year, now that we're within PARA, PARA sends out in the summer a valuation. So they look at your current account. They look at how many members you have. They look at what the state aid is expected to be. They look at what your investment earnings should be. They allow us to assume a 6% rate of return, which is also a big benefit of going to PARA because the state of Minnesota only allowed us to do a 5% expected rate of return before when we're calculating out where we should end up at the end of the year. And this is a chart that we made based on what PARA gave us. So our current benefit level is at the top there. So the current benefit level of 7,500 with the 6% rate of return. If we look at our assets and our liability, and the liability is our current members' liability for paying a pension and our deferred members. So we have some members, there's six of them right now, that have retired, but they haven't reached the age of 50, or they have reached the age of 50 and they haven't asked for their pension yet. So, and then we look at the surplus and deficit. So the figures that PARA came to us with the summer when they produced this report shows that we are expected to be at a surplus of $308,000 at the end of the year, which means, my spreadsheet rounded it up, but it's like 113.85% funded.
Do the firefighters have a choice if they either have a payout or get so much a year? Or, like you said, it's a minority?
Yep, good question, Bob. So it is, our Relief Association is a lump-sum payment. So the Relief Association itself could decide whether they want to do a monthly payout or a lump sum, but you have to choose one or the other, and we are a lump-sum payout. So if you look at these numbers, what we did is we did some calculations. Some of these ones PARA did, and I filled in the blanks. But if you look at, if we were going to raise the pension payout, let's say to $7,600, again, assuming the 6% rate of return, our assets are going to stay the same, but our liability would go up a little bit because it would be an extra $100 per firefighter. You'd see that we'd still be at a surplus of $283,000, which is still 113%. So what we did is we looked at the rose in yellow as kind of our target of what we should go for for a benefit increase while still maintaining an overfunded balance just in case the stock market doesn't go the way that we want it to. So the number that we came up with that we thought would be a prudent amount would be $8,000, which would be a $500 increase. You can see that we could go all the way up to $1,200 and still be at 100% funded, but that's not, that's not something that we have ever done in the past because it doesn't really make sense to bring it right to the, you know, the threshold. It's not prudent. It's not, you know, fiscally responsible. So that's why we picked a number right in the middle because, you know, we're in this really for the long haul. Every year, we look at the numbers. We pick a number that makes sense and still leaves us overfunded because this is not, you know, this is not a short-term thing that we're doing here. We're trying to long-term, over time, to provide the best possible pension for our members. All right, next slide.
So the guys that are still in there, that have retired, but they haven't taken the money, that's probably better for them because they still get that increase, correct?
Actually, they don't. So once you retire, your account is frozen. So whatever amount you retired at, that's the amount that you get. So that number doesn't actually increase. And I think the state does that because that's one of the ways that they can build the fund over time by holding that money while the person becomes the age of 50. And they, you know, we earn investments on that money over time.
As I say, you're making money out of their money.
Yeah.
But they're not going to benefit.
They won't benefit anything, but it's also an incentive to keep people till they're 50 because people at age 50 are still very valuable to the fire department.
Hell, they're valuable if you train them.
Yeah.
And right after you get done training, then they leave. Isn't there some way to, you know, I mean, if you go into some businesses, especially in the executive branch, you have to sign a contract that after they train you, you will still be there for a while. Firefighters, you can't do that, huh?
So I don't think that we could get away with that on the paid-on-call side. I don't know if full-time fire departments do that or not. It is, you know, it is a big investment that we make into these people.
Yeah, it is.
But with that said, the big investment that we have is on equipment. So we have to buy gear for these people, pagers, things like that. The training, actually, Minnesota has a really good training program. Almost all of our training gets reimbursed. So I think that our training budget is, I think we spent $27,000 this year, and I believe $20,000 of it has already been rebated back to us. And we're expecting the rest of it to get reimbursed as well. Yep, yep.
All right.
All right, so this chart right here, we did some scenarios based on those numbers as well. So the top box shows the different benefit levels, starting at our current benefit level of 7,500, going up to, going up to 8,700, the 6%, the assets, the liability. And that one, we're just assuming the 6% increase, which shows that probably, again, the correct number would be $8,000, which would still... It would still show us at 114% funded. The second one shows what would happen if there was a 0% rate of return. So just like if the stock market dropped from the 3.6% that we've made down to nothing, that shows what it would be at. The third set of numbers shows what would happen if, let's just say, that we had a bad year. Something bad happened over the next couple of months, and then we were at a negative 6% rate of return. You can see at the 8,000 benefit level, we would still be 101% funded. And then the bottom box, it's actually 3.88% because I ran those numbers a couple of months ago, but the stock market is at 3.6% versus 3.88, and the numbers didn't significantly change. So I just left it where it was before. So you can see that even if the year ended right now, we would still be at 104% funded.
Yeah, at what point does the city become liable and have to pay? I think I remember that from a long time ago.
Yep, so where it would come in, where the city would have to pay would be if we ever fell below 95% funded. If we fell below 95% funded, what they would do is they would look at the amount that we are underfunded, and they would, the city would pay 10% of that each year. And it would be recalculated each year at that 10%. So if the stock market went back up in year two, then maybe there would be no payment or be a less of payment. So that's one of the reasons, too, that it's really great that we're already doing the $14,000 per year because that kind of softens the curve in a situation like that as well. So back in 2009, right after the 2008 stock market crash, the first year of the city's liability, even though we were severely underfunded, was $37,000. And then the second year, it was $27,000, and then at that point, it was over with. And at the time, the city wasn't making a consistent contribution. So if they were doing $14,000 at the time, it would have just been a little bit more year one and a little bit more year two, and it would have been nothing after that. So that's one of the reasons of having that consistent city contribution as well. It kind of softens the curve when things like that happen. But that's also the reason we don't like to go like right to 100% or 101% or 102%. We like to leave a cushion in there just in case something like that happens because we don't want to come to you and ask for a benefit increase, and then immediately the next year go like, oh, sorry. You know, now you have to pay an extra $100,000 to the kitty because we asked for too much. We don't want that. Because again, we're in this for the long haul. This is like an annual thing that every year we study the numbers, we decide what's prudent, and we ask for what's prudent. It's really a collaboration, right? We want to work together because we all want the best firefighters. We want to recruit and retain the best that we can get.
From what I remember, in 2011, you guys weren't getting that much.
Well, it was just a year ago, right about now, that we approved a 25% increase in the benefit level from $6,000 to $7,500. And that was just a year ago.
It was just a year ago, yep.
So, and... Just to put, two things is to have that as part of the context of what we're talking about. And the other thing, which I doubt many people outside the core group know, and that is that the city is liable if there are shortfalls.
Yes.
I don't know if other, is that a matter of your bylaws and it can be changed or something?
That's a matter of the state, the way the state runs the program.
Okay.
Yep, and there's a couple of reasons for the $7,500 last year, the $1,500 increase. So first of all, we had a very healthy portfolio. We were very overfunded, was part of it. Part of it was moving to PARA, and moving to PARA afforded us a couple of benefits. Number one, being able to assume a 6% rate of return versus a 5% rate of return. You think about even this year, where we're at $75,000 so far in the year, that would be almost another $10,000 into the kitty. And then also having $20,000 less in administrative fees, there was another $20,000 into the kitty, so.
When does the switch to PARA become effective? I thought it was last January.
It did. It was, it was last year. It was January 1st of 2024.
So are they going to make up the difference of the 3.88 and 6% at the end of the year or something?
So these numbers are just used for projections. So that's another nuance of the reporting systems. State auditor for non-PARA does it the same way, that you have to turn in your report in the middle of the summer, like July 1st, guessing where you're going to end up at the end of the year, which is a little bit strange. Although with that said, you know, coming to you in the middle... in the middle of November, I think we can be pretty confident these numbers are not gonna wildly change by the end of the year.
Shouldn't change drastically, yeah.
Right.
You think the election's gonna have any effect?
Uh, I don't know. It depends on who you ask. I mean, it seems like the stock market, I mean, today wasn't a good day, but overall, the stock market's been strong for many years, and it took a big jump after the election as well, so.
Yeah, it takes a little bit to stabilize.
Yeah.
Are there any payouts involved in those numbers there? Are you assuming a certain level of paying off?
Well, so it's, so the liability is an interesting, uh, line, because the liability is assuming that everybody's going to be fully vested. So for example, somebody that has ten years, ten years on the department, it's assuming that's seventy-five thousand dollars. But in reality, they only get a percent, sixty percent of that. So it's a little bit nuanced in that way, that the liability is always overinflated. So for example, our current liability is, uh, roughly two point, two point three million dollars is our current liability. But if everybody were to quit today, it would be one point six million dollars we'd have to pay out. So it's a little bit interesting in that fact.
Yeah. I did read through that report that you sent to Mike Dzorski.
Yeah.
Very interesting. I should've requested that about a year ago.
Sure, yeah.
But I didn't know any.
Right. Well, this is the first report like that we got, because we just joined PARA. That's the report.
No, it was very, it was very good. Very well done, I thought.
Yeah. Actually, the state of Minnesota, it's on the, uh, Office of State Auditor's website. They produce a report every year. Like I said, unfortunately, it's two years old. Uh, currently, the, the latest report's from twenty twenty-two, but it's actually very interesting, because you can see every city that's part of that plan. You can see exactly how many members they have, what their benefit level is, what their assets are, what their liabilities are, their funded ratio. You can see their rate of return and everything. So it's really, really very interesting.
Matt, do you have that report that you could send out to the rest of us?
I don't, but I can get it to you.
It's on that, uh, flash drive, if you want to grab it from there, too.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead and go to the next slide. All right, so this is another, uh, instance of that what-if scenario. So this is derived directly from the PARA report that, uh, Mr. Look will send to you. But if we look at our benefit level of seventy-five hundred, uh, again, our total assets, our total liability, the deferred liability, which are the members of, uh, retired and haven't collected their benefit yet, and the total liability, again, showing a surplus of three hundred and eight thousand. If we went to eight thousand dollar benefit, uh, we would still have a surplus of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. If we go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is a interesting exercise to calculate out what our real cost is, uh, for the relief association. So what the real cost is, what does it actually cost the real, the relief association each year to maintain our benefit? So the numbers I used here, and this is a spreadsheet, so we can play with the numbers any way we want, but it's basically our state fire aid, which we know that amount and what it's gonna be, and we can assume it's gonna be a three percent increase. The municipal contribution, we can assume that you would pay that again next year, and that would be fourteen thousand. Uh, six percent interest on our projected assets, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, which gives us a total projected income of two hundred and sixty thousand in a little bit. So if we take the number of firefighters, which is currently twenty-nine paid-on call members, we times that by the current benefit level of seventy-five hundred, it comes to two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, just to maintain where we're at. And that leaves us with a surplus of forty-four thousand dollars. If we were to raise that amount by five hundred dollars to go to eight thousand dollar benefit, we would still have the surplus of twenty-nine thousand, eight fifty. So, um, I know that we've talked a little bit about, uh, increasing the number of firefighters that we have on our department, and what kind of effect that would have. Um, I went back and looked at our history. So, um, the average number of firefighters we've had on our department over the last ten years is thirty-three. Uh, twice, we've had thirty-eight members for at least one year. Um, a lot of times what we find out is firefighters that start out will do it for a year, two years, and then they decide this is not for me, and they move on. So that's part of the reason why that number kind of fluctuates. It's not so much the older people retiring, but it's a lot of times the newer people coming in just realize that this is not something that fits into their family life or their work-life balance, or so on and so forth. So if you were to take that number and let's say put it at thirty-three or thirty-five, um, we would still be at a surplus, is, I guess, the point I'm trying to make. Um, I know that, uh, currently, we're approved to have up to forty-five members. Um, I don't know if we would get to that number in a very quick fashion. Um, I know that we're constantly interviewing people, and we've just, again, brought on another firefighter here within the last two months. So we are definitely actively recruiting. Uh, let's go to the next slide. This is, uh, again, these are the numbers that I got directly from sources that exist on the internet, official sources. And again, unfortunately, this data is a little bit old, but, uh, the question was, well, how does our benefit compare to other cities that surround us? So these are all the cities that touch us in way, one way, shape, or form. Um, you can see that we are definitely are one of the highest benefit levels around. Let's look at O'Kro, which is a similarly sized city. Um, their current benefit level is at forty-five hundred dollars. But you can also see, if you look at their funding ratio, that's basically what they can afford. That gives them right at the hundred and one percent mark.
Well, ours is also at seventy-five hundred, not six thousand.
Uh, that's because that number's from twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
I just wanted to use the number from-
I mean-
I wanted to try to compare apples to apples, which I know is not.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, my point is, that's the current apple in East Bethel is seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred, but also the funding ratio is a hundred and fourteen percent, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
I still have a question about one thing.
Yeah.
And that is, you mentioned on the previous, the previous slide, the six percent you can assume return on assets. Well, how does that factor into the reality of what your return on assets actually is?
I know. That's a-
You know, that's, that's where I'm lost on that.
It's a really great question. So basically-
I don't know about that, but it's, it's one I'm stuck on anymore.
So, um, it's, you know, I don't know how they came up with that. I don't know how exactly-
But I mean, does it ever turn into real money for you, or your, your results are just what you get, right?
Yeah. Basically, it's just some, a tool that we can use to decide where we stand and whether we should increase our benefit. Um, and it's always been this way, even with the state auditor office.
It's perplexing.
We did our report right in the middle of the year, and we could only assume five percent increase. And on that report, you could put anything you want. You could say, like, well, we assume that our, that we're gonna have, uh, you know, zero, like, we think this is gonna be a bad year. We'll just say, no, you know, no return on investment. Or you could say, we think it's gonna be a bad year, negative twenty thousand.
That was the one thing that threw me off in that report. Everything else was very sensible and all that, and then this number out of nowhere that doesn't turn into reality. It's like, well, what's the point?
I know.
Of even bringing it in.
And well, what happens is then next year, when they do the valuation, again, next summer, you know, it'll be using the real numbers from year end. And again, we'll have to play this-
Assuming six percent again?
We'll have to play this, uh, yeah, the same guessing game.
That's a little odd, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, next slide. Uh, this shows the history of the benefit. So, uh, again, we've been coming, uh, to visit the council every single year for at least twelve years in a row now. Um, we take a look at our numbers every year. We, uh, look at where we stand. We look at what's prudent, and then we make a recommendation to the council. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So I just wanted to point out, I don't know if everybody knows this, but in addition to providing the services, you know, for fire and rescue to the citizens of East Bethel, we actually are very involved with a lot of other things that maybe people don't know about. But we do a fire safety program at the local schools. We have our HeartSafe program, where we provide free CPR classes to the community. Uh, we are the charter organization for Cub Scout PAC three eighty-seven. We have a fire auxiliary, which also does some great things in the community. Um, we provide first aid training to the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, BMX group up in Isani. Uh, we have a monthly, uh, gathering for our retirees. We support the St. Francis Royalty, and we used to support the East Bethel Royalty when they existed. Uh, we support NACE. Uh, we have, uh, Halloween Community Event. This year, we had several trucks go out to, uh, department buildings, to the, uh, to Castle, uh, Greystone, and to Cedarwood Estates. And we had another one kind of driving around the city, handing out candy to the children. Uh, we do the Santa Parade every year, where we also do a food shelf collection. So there are many other things that our members are doing out in the community besides just the standard day-to-day, uh, answering the pager calls as well. So, next slide. So what we're requesting is, uh, we increase the benefit level from seventy-five hundred dollars a year to eight thousand dollars per year, starting January first, twenty twenty-five. So I know we've been asking questions all along, but there's more, fire away. Nope.
I, I don't presume to speak for everybody up here, but to my mind, I think everybody else's, the number one priority is the safety of the firefighters and the other residents, because y'all are residents of East Bethel as well, and the other residents of East Bethel. That's the number one priority above all. Property is replaceable, you know, we all know that kind of stuff. Um, I had a talk earlier today, it just so happened that our follow-up meeting with Jerry, Jerry Strike, who did the operational analysis, or whatever you want to call it, on the East Bethel Fire Department, was for us, for two of us, because you can't all be in one room at one time. It was earlier today. And, uh, I asked him what he would do in exactly the same position that we find ourselves in right now. And I'm, I'm inclined to go along with what his thought was, and that is, for now, I'd like to table this item. You know, it's good that we got the presentation, it's good that we got our questions answered and all. But I, I sense that we're in a time of, because you, you all read his report, he gave the re, results to you, too. And between, what are we gonna do in terms of what calls we're gonna make, who's gonna be in what positions, and all that, seems to be a lot of things in flux right now with the East Bethel Fire Department, from where we're sitting anyway. And so I th, I think we need to buy a little time before we make a decision. That's, that's my personal read of it. I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not.
Well, how would any of those changes affect the seventy-five to eight thousand change?
It wouldn't, well, it's a good question. Good question. Uh, is, one of the recommendations was to go in an active recruiting push, and that would increase, that would increase, presumably, if it was effective, it would increase the numbers of people, and hence it would increase the amount of, it would increase all those, it would change all those numbers and those projections, in terms of the number of people who would be downstream in line for benefits and all that. So it, it, it does impact it down the road.
Troy, did you account for additional people?
Yep. So if you go back a few slides, more, that one right there. So the numbers can be changed, and this, these are, this Excel spreadsheet goes behind this, but the number of firefighters, we were assuming that it would be, you know, we're just using the number we have today, twenty-nine. So I don't know what number that we want to go to. You know, I hear two conversations going on. Number one, that we should reduce the number of calls that we go on. And then I hear the other conversation, we should increase the number of firefighters. So I'm not sure if we reduce the calls. I don't know if it makes sense to.
That's exactly the question I asked Jerry when he gave his presentation to us, was how do you reconcile those two things?
Right. Uh, as far as your, uh, comment about people might be changing positions, people might be moving around, I mean, that doesn't change the fact that we still have the firefighters that still have their years of service.
Yeah.
So Troy, if between right now and, say, hypothetical February, we get ten additional recruits, that may make a major change to the, this scenario that we have here, are you able to come back to city council and say, hey, because of these numbers changed, we need to reevaluate this and move the numbers?
Yeah. So the, uh, the timing on this is, uh, this needs to be, uh, sent to the state by the end of the year. So if we were to pause on this now, we would have to come back next year, uh, and look at doing a benefit increase for twenty twenty-six.
So, but could, could you change this again next year?
Oh, for sure.
Early next year and-
Yeah.
Say we needed, so it, it's not set in stone for one year, there is flexibility in changing it throughout the year?
Uh, usually, we, so we get the evaluation in the, I think that it came in, in, uh, late July or August. So the valuation comes out from PARA, and at that time, we crunch the numbers, and we come up with a decision on what we want to do for the following calendar year. So, uh, if we were gonna put a pause on this, I would like to be able to come back to council before the year's out, to take another, uh, swing at convincing you.
Take our pulse.
Right. I mean, if there's any additional information that you would like to see, or you want the numbers crunched in a different way, I can do that all day long.
Yeah, I know.
We can do it before the end of the year.
Extremely knowledgeable about this, Troy. It's always amazed me. You know, every single number, yeah.
Been, uh, you know, I've been running the Relief Association for fifteen years. We're in the process of trying to wind down that organization. We're hoping to get it done by the end of the year. Uh, but, uh, we've engaged with a, a attorney to help us convert our five oh one C four into a different organization. And at that point, uh, there'll be no more Relief Association.
If I can put a finer point on it, I'd like to buy the time between now and the first meeting in December.
Okay.
Of the council, which gives you plenty of time to do whatever if you have to, before the end of the year.
And if you want to run whatever feedback or whatever additional information that you would like to see, uh, through Mr. Look, we'll be sure to rebuild this in whatever way, shape, or form that you'd like to see.
I'll second the table.
Yeah, this is just a work session, so it's on the consent agenda, so you can pull that and discuss on that if you want.
Yeah. That's, that's kind of where I think we're at. I'm, I'm at, I don't know who else is, but-
Well, I think one key thing to remember is that, I believe, the city workers and staff and so forth, they got a three percent increase last year. We wanted to show our support of our fire department, and you guys got a twenty-five.
Uh-huh.
And that was, that was a huge-
Well, twenty-five for the pension, right?
Right. But it was a huge, a huge addition to what we were doing. So.
Yep. I, I want to point out, first of all, we're very thankful that you approved that. So what I'm about to say may sound like I'm not, not, but it's, I a hundred percent appreciate that, and we all appreciate that. But that had no fiscal impact on the city. So that's because our fund was funded to the point where we could make that increase. So-
That's something that should've been done a long time ago.
Well, we've been, every year, I mean, we look at it every single year.
I'm, I'm talking about raising the pay for the firefighters.
Yeah, raising the pay for the firefighters. I'm a hundred percent on board for that, too.
Yeah, we've been talking about that for a little while. But, you know, the time for talking's over, we just gotta do something.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot, and we'll, we'll pick it up in the council meeting, I guess, and-
All right.
Go through the formalities.
So when do you think that you would give, uh, the feedback to Mr. Look, that you would want me to edit or change on this?
What's the first, what's the first meeting in December?
Well, before that.
Oh, we got one more meeting this month.
Yeah.
So it'll be the ninth and the twenty-third would be the meeting dates on December.
So the ninth.
Unless there's any changes to that.
So when counting, when our, in our regular meeting, we'll table it until the ninth of December.
All right. So I'll be looking forward to receiving-
Yeah.
-feedback on what additional you'd like to see. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you for the presentation.
Excellent work.
That was Troy. Good numbers.
Troy, if I can have you point out the report, is it the SVF report? This one here.
The second one.
Second one, okay. So, let's do, pull this off to here, make a copy, and then I'll forward that off.
Okay.
Give this back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, just have a couple of, uh, items here. I put at your desk a, um, the, uh, document that we drafted with the personnel committee for, uh, facility access policy. I'm sorry, that's not it. Um, you have it there. Um, and, uh-
I don't- I don't have it.
Oh. Yep. And perhaps for the sake of time, um, if you want to review this and, um, noting changes, or, and we can bring it back to a council meeting at that point. Uh, we have about ten minutes left, it looks like, here. Yeah, ten minutes left. Uh, I wanted to get to some security system quotes that we received, and Nate is here this evening to kinda touch on some of those items.
I thought Nate was here to talk about Ford F four-fifties.
I got that conversation due.
So, if you, if you would like to do that, we can, um, like, you know, if you wanna review the facility policy on your own time, and then, and then we can bring it back as an action item, uh, to the council or to another work session, whatever your preference is, and, and see if there's any changes at that point, so.
So, that's the East Bethel Fire Department Policies and Procedures Manual, uh, number one thousand dash one dated ten-two-twenty-four?
Yeah. And, and to that point, I mean, it can be all East Bethel facilities. You know, this was just kinda crafted after, uh, um, the, uh, actually, it was the Andover Fire Department that had this particular document. We went through it, um, uh, the mayor and, uh, council member Durosh and I went through it and kinda crafted it for East Bethel. And, uh, and we can still make changes to the title and anything else that that we want to. So, um, at any rate, that's a work in progress.
Okay.
But if we go to item three?
Sure.
Okay. Nate, do you need a plug-in?
Yeah, do you have it right here? So, we were asked to take a look at, uh, maybe some security up, upgrades to, um, access to a couple of our buildings. Um, Fire Station One, City Hall, and we've, we've got some quotes from WH Security, which provides our security for, um, City Hall right now and our East Bethel Ice Arena. So, we included those with the quotes for you guys to take a look at. The, um, price for Fire Station One would be to change it over, so each firefighter would have their own card and own key number to get into that building, and it would be recorded each time. That's how it works with our East Bethel Ice Arena. So, we could take a look and see who accesses the building each time it's opened up. It tells.
Is it that way at City Hall, too?
Right now, at City Hall, we have access with a card that gets us into the back portion that registers who opens the door to get in there, correct?
Okay.
And we did get a quote on here from them to change over to this company as a, um, just to kinda streamline everything, but we already have a different company that does it here for City Hall. So, we can just kinda go through those and see if it's something that the council wants to pursue. So, the price for Fire Station One to, to convert over to this system would be six thousand three hundred dollars. There's also another, uh, fee at the back of this for twenty-seven hundred dollars to actually go in and cut the locking, locking mechanism into the door jamb. You have to have a locksmith that does that. So, the total cost for Fire Station One would be around nine thousand four hundred dollars. Um.
Is that including the cards, then?
That includes the cards. The cards are really cheap. Um, you get fifty for their, I think they're even cheaper than that once you buy a bunch of them, but.
And what happens if somebody, their employment is terminated? What happens to that card? You can just go in there and ch-ch-ch.
Go in there, turn it off.
Save it.
Yep. Whoever the, whoever the administrator of the system is, so. Same with their key code, their, their punch-in key code. The reason for Fire Station One having both of those, if a firefighter got called in and they had to get into the building and they didn't have the card with them, they could still access it with their personal PIN number. They could get in either way on that one. So, it's a little bit more money. It's, it's like two hundred dollars more per door for that. So, that's something we can take a look at if the council desires. Um, they also were looking at security cameras for, uh, Fire Station One for the exterior of the building. We got a quote on that, just something to take a look at. That was thirty-six hundred dollars. Um, the East Bethel Recycle Center, we got a quote on that because we've had a lot of illegal dumping that takes place there. We had a security system there at one time, and that no longer is, uh, working. So, that, we got a quote for that of another four thousand eight hundred dollars. That would come out of the recycling fund that's self-funded, um, not from the Building Improvement Fund. City Hall was, um, oh, the Ice Arena, too, we've had a lot of damage there. We got another quote in there to take a look at.
Ice Arena, did you say?
Yeah, the, the, East Bethel Ice Arena would be four exterior cameras and one interior camera for that, uh, forty-three hundred dollars for that one. And, um, City Hall, like I said, we have something here that works, but this would streamline it with, with the existing other buildings, was thirty-six hundred. And then lastly, the Whispering Aspen Community Center, this is what we kinda have to do. The system we have there is, uh, no longer supported and outdated. We can no longer add users to that system. Um, so, this is what we kinda look into, like we have to do at some point. But, so, they're just the numbers we threw together for you guys to take a look at and discuss and see if it's something you wanted to pursue.
How's the system in Whispering As, Aspen gonna work, being a community center?
Same way. When, uh, someone rents it out, they come to City Hall, and they check out a card. Uh, we have control of that card, and the renters put down a deposit, and then we can control when they go in and out. If they were to lose the card, we can cancel that card.
So, Mr. Mayor, we, we have set aside in the Building Improvement Fund fifty thousand dollars every year for projects, undefined projects that may be coming up. Um, the recycling center would pay for their own, the, um, Ice Arena would pay for their own, and the other buildings then would, would be the responsibility of that fund. Um, primarily, what we have is, um, a litany of different systems that are out there.
Yeah.
And, uh, whether it's cipher locks, or keys, or, or, you know, cards, or whatever the case is, and I, and I, kinda looking at that and kinda seeing some of the flexibilities that these new systems have, uh, Nate can literally let them in with his phone if they need access to it, uh, without having to drive somebody out there and let them in and that sort of thing. There's a lot of flexibility with the new technologies that are out there. But getting everything on one that's supported and, um, and everyone's familiar with, I think, would be advantageous. The new cameras, uh, the old cameras, they, they recorded, but you couldn't, you couldn't make out license plates. Um, uh, the new ones are, are a little more high-def, and they offer that, that opportunity to prosecute then at that point if somebody's stealing copper wires, you know, or whatever the case is, like, has happened in the past. Um, and then just.
So, these systems are all interchangeable? Shall I say that they can talk to each other? Or is that we're gonna have to buy extra software to do that?
No, it's all included. It's all cloud-based. Um, you could access it with a mobile. Whoever the administrator is for the system would have access to whatever systems we decide have access to it. So, Matt could look at each system and see who's going in and out or whoever, yeah.
You would be the logical administrator, right?
Uh, I, I could do a couple of them, but some of them, yeah, might be the fire chief or the city administrator.
Right, right.
I do the Ice Arena right now, and we'd be doing Whispering Aspen, and we control the rentals for up there on the weekends and stuff, so.
I'm, I'm real supportive. The, the motivation for this is not only protecting the assets that we own as residents, citizens of East Bethel, but also limiting our liability, too. Because uncontrolled access to facilities can open a can of worms on liability that we do not wanna open. So, two pretty strong motivations.
About doing it, so.
Yeah.
I move that we go ahead with it.
This is still a work session, so we'll, uh.
Oh, that's right.
We can, we can bring this forward as a case of the next.
Put that on the agenda, or?
If we can get it on an agenda. Uh, but just wanna kinda just discuss.
Thank you for informing, uh, us of the costs associated with it. I think, I think we're supportive. The, could be worse, we'll put it that way.
I think one, one, um, access to a building that isn't, you know, proper, could put us at a liability that would cost access to what this whole system would, would run us. So, I think it's probably good due diligence to.
Somebody grabs one of the fire trucks and just takes off through town. That'd be a big problem.
Okay. Couple of minutes before council meeting.
Okay. That concludes the working meeting.